Okay. Good morning. The Prince George's County Planning Board is now in session. As always, we start with a moment of silence for those who have passed on in the intervening week, those folks of which we are aware. So first, we'd like to take a moment of silence for someone in our commission family who passed away. It was Mary Ann Milton. Mary Ann Milton worked for Park and Planning for over 30 years. She was in the planning department. She worked as a drafting technician three ultimately with the Prince George's County Planning Department. She retired in 2010, and she just died, so we want to keep her and her family in here first. Nelson Leon Yumana, age 19, who was found fatally shot in Chilum. We want to remember the victims of the tornadoes that ripped through central Tennessee, the countless, the ever-growing number of victims of the coronavirus outbreak. The number keeps changing so rapidly. I think we're up to close to 3,400 people who have passed and 92,000 global cases. John Columbe, the founder of, at 89, the founder of Trader Joe's Grocery Chain. Jack Welch, the former head of General Electric, known for transforming GE in corporate America. Lee Phillip Bell, age 91, longtime talk show host. James Lipton, age 93, soap opera writer, Broadway lyricist and producer and director. Bobby Batista, age 67, one of the original CNN headline news anchors. Also, Earl Rogers Sr., who was, at age 74, was a victim of a hit-and-run on Sunday. And then Corporal Danita Ingram, age 51, who was a detective with the Prince George's Police Department since 2008, who died at home on March 4th. And for those of you who may have suffered a loss in your family, our hearts go out to each and every one of you. For those of you who may have had illnesses or other events that caused you harm and from which you are healing, we extend our deepest thoughts and concern to you as well. So if we're unaware of any loss that you have in your family, please accept our condolences, and may we have that moment of silence. Thank you. It is Women's History Month. It's now March, officially March. It is Women's History Month, and of course, we are going to celebrate all the women in the world, all the women at the Park and Planning Commission, all the women in the county, all the women within our viewing audience and actual audience, right? And all you men, I know you're celebrating all the women, right? Okay. All right. That's what I'm talking about. Okay. It is Correctile Colon Cancer Awareness Month, Employee Spirit Month. Employee Spirit Month, okay, listen up. It is National Clean Up Your IRS Act Month. Okay, good luck with that. It is Optimism Month, and it is National Nutrition Month. And that's really important because with this virus going around, you know, we want to make sure that we built, there's a lot of things we have to do, like washing our hands constantly, but we also want to make sure that we take care of our nutritional needs because that will help build up our immune system. Today is March 5th. It is World Tennis Day. And also, March 5th, in 1770, there was the Boston Massacre, and five people were killed on King Street, but African-American formerly enslaved Christmas Attucks was the very first to die in the American Revolution on this day in 1770. 1849 Zachary Taylor was sworn in as the 12th United States President. 1877 Rutherford B. Hayes was inaugurated as the 19th U.S. President. 1917 Woodrow Wilson was inaugurated for his second term. And also, and then, by the way, while we're celebrating Women's History Month, it is so especially poignant this year because this year marks the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which finally gave women the right to vote. And let me tell you, we make a difference. Just saying. It is also National Peanut Month, National Noodle Month, and Quinoa Month, because we're foodies up here, so we'll always announce that. I also want to remind everybody, you see the census logo up there? It is imperative that every Prince Georgian be counted. Everyone in the nation needs to be counted, but right now, I'm focused on Prince George's County because we lose $18,250 for every person who is not counted. And that translated, in 2010, that translated to a loss of $363 million that Prince George's County missed out on. And we had a higher undercount than the state average and the national average, and that's, you know, that money could have gone to education, to transportation needs. I see a lot of people here present who, you know, with applications and whatnot, and people want better roads, and they want better transportation. That money could have helped. We want better education. That money could have helped. Plus, it goes to other social programs, school lunches and things of that matter. So we want to make sure that we are Prince George's proud and proud to be counted. So thank you. And then finally, we lost it. Okay, he's not present in the room right now. I don't know where he is, but I want to give a shout out to our own George Johnson. Oh, there he is. Okay, George Johnson, okay. So I want to give a shout out to him, because George Johnson has been working with the Prince George's County Legal, I mean, the Maryland National Capitol Legal Department, assigned to Prince George's County for over 22 years. And he's just an amazing attorney, an amazing human being. He grew up in Prince George's County, went to DeMatha High School, graduated from the University of Maryland, received his law degree from Georgetown University, and was admitted to the Maryland Bar. He's an exceptional writer. He does a spectacular job on our briefs and does really high-quality written work. He's at his best when he's preparing those briefs and memoranda, and he's always willing to help. He really steps up to the plate, not only for the legal department, but any other thing that we do, when we do community service activities and whatnot. And sometimes, it's like 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning, in the dark, in the cold, and George is there to help out. He is now, he's been a part of the land use team for so many years too, and sometimes he was detailed to Montgomery County and to the litigation team as well. So he is about to leave the Prince George's County side of the commission, though he's not leaving the commission. He's going to embark on a new adventure by joining the litigation team full-time. So he's going to relocate to our By County Legal Office in Riverdale and work closely with our Deputy General Counsel and our Principal Counsel, Deborah Borden and Bill Dickerson, and of course, our General Counsel, Adrian Gardner. And I just have to forewarn all of you over there, I have to say this, George, y'all better stock up on your food supply, because that guy got a really good appetite. So, George, if you could stand up, because we wish you well, and we thank you for your years of service to the Prince George's County Legal Department. Superb job. Superb job. Do not be a stranger. Do you want to take a minute or two?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, so that's, see? He likes to write and eat. That's his story. Thank you so much, George. Okay, we wish you well, and we will see you after this, okay? Thank you.
George, y'all know I have more dessert, too.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with our agenda. First, we have the draft minutes of the Planning Board meeting of January 30th, 2020, and February 13th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item, one, we have a commissioner's item, which is a resolution for appreciation for Captain Matthew Schmidt, who is going to be retiring from the police, the police department of Park and Planning Police. And he's just done a superb job. He's ably and conscientiously served the citizens of Prince George's and Montgomery Counties and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for 25 years as a dedicated member of the Prince George's and Montgomery Counties divisions of the Maryland National Capitol Park Police. He's just done such a great job implementing key organizational initiatives and programs, including burglary prevention program, the standalone K-9 unit, the By County Park Police Beat Restructuring Park Police Dashboard System, and served on the Park Rules and Rewrite Committee, and so much more. His retirement is officially tomorrow, so if we can pass this resolution, it would be greatly appreciated.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Also, we have before us the consent agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendation on item 4B, or any board member who wishes to discuss?
Move approval of item number 4B. Second. After the findings, staff findings, and approve on this item on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. So we have before us some resolutions also that from prior weeks. So we have before us item nine, which is the detailed site, a resolution for detailed site plan 19044 Park Place. The case was heard on February 27, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 10 is a resolution for the departure for design standards 665 Park Place, also on February 27th. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I will also tell you, we have another announcement. So the Craft, along with the Craft Hines, along with the National Hockey League and the National Hockey League Players Association, is looking for America's most spirited hockey community. So we are Prince George's proud, and we're going to rally around our own Prince George's County Tucker Road Ducks and the Tucker Road Ice Rink to win a $150,000 grant to help with the rink upgrades, along with $10,000 worth of hockey equipment through the NHLPA Goals and Dreams Program, and provide the chance to host an NHL preseason game in their community rink. So we need rallying points for our Tucker Road Ice Rink and team, so please visit pgparks.com and social media sites to view the video, and share your reaction to the Tucker Road Ice Rink story, and register to vote. Okay, so that's our Prince George's competition for this national, in this national competition. Thank you. Okay, so now, I'm going to go with item, I understand we have a request for a continuance for item eight. I am about to address that, only if, only the request for the continuance, not the substance at this moment. So who wants to go forward? Okay?
Mr. Bishop.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section, in a letter dated March 4th, the applicant requested to continue the case from today's date to April 9th, 2020. Staff is in agreement.
Okay, Mr. Hatcher? Is there anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hatcher?
For the record, my name is Chris Hatcher with the law firm of Lurch Early &amp; Brewer on behalf of the applicant. We just respectfully request a continuance.
Okay, there's no one else on the sign-up sheet for this. So is anyone who wish to speak? Okay, sir, I'm going to need you to sign up. Okay, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and everyone, all of you need to raise the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
Is this, is this good?
Yes.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Bradley Hurd. I'm a party record in the case, and I had submitted a response to the motion for continuance, wherein I had indicated that I was not opposed in substance to the motion to continuance. However, I was unaware of the, I was unaware of the reasons for the continuance, but I sent a response and a proposed order. I think the applicant had requested a continuance until April 9th. I had suggested that any, any real effort at sort of meeting and conferring regarding the disputes that are at issue in the, in the underlying detailed site plan would take longer than a month, and so I had proposed a timeframe. Basically, I had suggested to the board that they do grant the continuance, that they instruct the parties-
But not, not April 9th?
Not April 9th. To instruct the parties to sort of meet and confer, submit a new plan no later than September.
Okay. So let me do this. I'm going to have Mr. Hatcher come back to the microphone. We cannot instruct, but we can strongly advise for this meeting to take place and, and to, you know, to see if there can be some collaboration, some cooperation, but I can't, let's see what your timeframe is. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Again, Chris Hatcher here on behalf of the applicant. This applicant has actually been coordinating with Mr. Hurd specifically regarding this application since-
Let me make sure, I know he was distracted for a moment. I just want to make sure he's hearing this. So you're saying that you have been coordinating with Mr. Hurd for a while?
My client has been directly coordinating with them since 2000, excuse me, since 1918? Oh, fuck, 1918. 2018, since before we were all born.
Okay. Even me in that case, okay?
Yeah, 2018, and although we did just receive his voluminous document outlining some concerns, the primary reason why we were requesting a continuance, although we will continue to coordinate with him, was to address some traffic, some TDM measures that we intend to incorporate into the plan. So prior to submitting the continuance request, my client did call him to coordinate for a meeting. He was available, wasn't available up until late, later on Wednesday, and so-
Later on Wednesday, yesterday?
Yesterday.
Okay.
So we do intend to continue to coordinate with him, as we have been through since 2018, but that wasn't the reason why we were asking.
Okay, so let me do this. I can't, Mr. Hurd mentioned a new application. I can't request a new application. This is the application that's been filed, and right now, you have slightly over a month. You don't feel that there's anything that can arise during that time? Any progress?
I'm happy to talk whenever, whenever I can. I won't take the board's time-
Let's do that.
With the, with the, with the timeline of the contacts with the applicant, and poor Mr. Hatcher is new to the case, but I, I will, I will just say that it has been an effort. I have been attempting to be in contact for quite some time.
I think, I think you've got a month. I think we can see where we are in that time. If you make a concerted effort to actually meet and communicate, I think that's probably good.
Okay.
Was there anyone else who wish to speak on this matter, Mr. Cosby? Okay. Is there a motion to continue?
Move approval for the requests for continuance to April 9th.
To April 9th, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
For the record, I am Thomas Severs, Senior Planner with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number six on the agenda is a departure from signed design standards for Collingbrook at Rodenhouser, DS DS 696. The subject project proposes a departure of seven square feet from the required 12-square-foot signed letter area maximum for two gateway signs. The site is located in the northeastern part, is located in the northeastern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 74A and Council District 4. More specifically, the site is located on the east side of Church Road at its intersection with Udarian Drive. The subject site is located in the residential estate RE zone. The site is bounded on the north, east, and south by the RE-zoned properties, and to the west by RA-zoned property. The site is located outside but adjacent to the city of Bowie Municipal Boundary. The subject site is located within Aviation Policy Area 6. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently improved with single-family detached homes surrounding the entrance to the site. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally level. The master plan right-of-way map shows the master plan collector roadway known as Church Road abutting the site. This photo shows two entrance features as seen here on each side. The site plan shows the location of the entrance features at the front of the development. This detail shows the existing entrance feature where the sign is to be mounted and is comprised of brick and capstone elements. And this slide shows a larger detail of the proposed 19-square-foot sign and the proposed landscaping scheme. The subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the Planning Board adopt the findings and approve DS DS 696, subject to the three conditions found on page nine of the staff report. Staff has coordinated with applicant regarding a revision to staff's recommended conditions, and staff is in agreement. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Rivera. Were there questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. Rivera.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Norman Rivera, representing Crusoe Homes. With me today is Andy Garrich and Tom Vickel from our Solzhez Associates. As Mr. Severs has indicated, this is for two entrance feature signs. It's really just for that area where the lettering is. So what you see there is a very large, highly ornate brick and masonry structure that houses the actual lettering. And seasonal landscaping will be at the base, which you see to the lower left of the drawing, so that changes over time as the weather changes. So the, the area of the sign is that area of the white with the letters. If it was named something shorter than Collington Estates, we probably wouldn't need the variants, but it's a long name for the subdivision. With that, we agree with the staff's recommendations and findings. We did request to delete condition two, which is on page nine of your report. The original, the condition originally requested that we extend the sign easement area. So there's a maintenance easement to the HOA for maintenance of that sign, where those circles are. They originally asked us to extend it through the PUE, but the PUE can be accessed by the public, visitors, maintenance personnel, et cetera. So condition two is not needed, and it can be deleted, and staff concurs. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're here for any questions.
Okay, so are there any questions of Mr. Rivera at this time? Okay, Mrs. Severs, let's see about condition two on page nine.
He agrees.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So I have two people signed up, but not to speak. Alvin Milton and Yvette Milton?
They're here, and they're in support. They actually are in the house that is to the bottom circle behind it, so that-
And they are here?
They were here.
Oh, they were here.
But they signed up to speak, but they just wanted to, that's their house right there, the big white one. Very nice house.
Okay.
But they just wanted to get more detail. We provided a copy of the plans. We'll keep them posted. Now that they're parties of record, they can-
But it does say that they signed up as proponents, okay?
Correct.
But they did not wish to speak.
Yes.
Was there anyone else who did wish to speak? Were there any questions of Mr. Rivera? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DS DS dash 696, along with conditions one and three as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay. Item seven, followed by five, followed by 3B.
Members of the-
Good morning. Good morning.
You'll have to forgive me, I'm trying to get used to a new look here.
I, welcome to my world.
They are, they're progressives, and I don't know quite where to look.
Like I said, welcome to my world.
For the record, I'm Thomas Burke with the Urban Design Section. The project before you today is listed as item seven on today's agenda, specific design plan SDP 1202-07 for Canter Creek, which includes type-two tree conservation plan, TCP 2043-2019. The applicant is seeking approval for phases three and four of the development of a 161-unit single-family detached dwellings.
So do we need to do something about this PowerPoint?
It's not on his screen.
Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The site is located in the southern portion of Prince George's County in Planning Area 82A and Council District 9. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of Frank Tippet Road, just south of its intersection with Rosaryville Road in Upper Marlboro. The site is bounded on the north and south, and to the east across Frank Tippet Road, by, by other residentially zoned and developed properties, and to the west by ROS-zoned parkland. Canter Creek subdivision lies partially within the military installation overlay zone for height, with the subject phases entirely within the zone. Based on the property's distance from the runway, the proposed dwellings will be well below the height limitation. This aerial photo illustrates the pre-development conditions of this phase, showing the site is partially wooded with some clearing and fallow farm fields interspersed. The development of phases one and two, which were approved with previous applications, can be seen here. This map shows the topography of the site relative to the approved layout of the, of the previously platted Canter Creek, and then the proposed sections here. The master plan right-of-way map identifies Frank Tippet Road as a collector. The site plan shows the overall SDP for Canter Creek subdivision, with phases three and four shown in darker print. The proposed layout and number of units is consistent with the approved comprehensive design plan and preliminary plan. The landscape rendering emphasizes the development in phases three and four, also showing the Equestrian Trail, the neighboring Joshua Turner Historic Site, and the previously dedicated The type-two tree conservation plan shows onsite reforestation and preservation, portions of which will provide a forested buffer between this development and Williamsburg Estates Community to the north, to Piscataway Creek to the west, and to the historic Joshua Turner House property to the east, shown here on the historic, excuse me, on the viewshed analysis, which, which demonstrates that with the existing woodland to be preserved and the topography, this development and the trail will be substantially buffered from the viewshed of this historic The urban design staff recommends that the Planning Board adopt the findings of this report and approve specific design plan SDP 1202-07 and TCP 2-043-2019 for Canter Creek phases three and four, with the conditions found on page 20 of the staff report dated February 20th, 2020, and as revised by conditions to be provided by the applicant, of which staff has reviewed and are in full agreement. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ship.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, William Ship with the Law Offices of O'Malley Miles.
So we're going to accept your proposed revisions to the conditions and to the record as applicant's Exhibit One.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are very minor technical corrections, or clarifications, I call it. Condition One-E, after the discussion of the trail of being no more than 12-foot feet in width, we would like to add or minimize to the fullest extent possible. And we would like that same language added to Condition One-J five, after the 12-feet reference as well. The purpose for that is, as the grading is done for the site, there's a lot of steepness, and obviously trails have to meet a certain level of grade. And we may be a little bit more than 12 feet, but we understand staff's concern that we clear as little as possible. But we wanted to have a little bit of recognition of that issue. And then in Condition One-J four-D, we would ask that that reference be deleted. There's been a number of discussions with staff in the engineering firm here, and we feel at this point we can give the desired updates to the homeowners association, but at this point it didn't need to be a condition, and I think staff's in agreement with that. With that, I have no other comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ship.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a number of people signed up here regarding the proposed homes. So let's see. I'm going to go in the order in which people have signed up. So I have... And forgive me if I don't pronounce it correctly. Peter Virgil?
Yes.
Okay, come on down. And there are a number of people who want to speak, and if you want to associate yourself with the comments of any previous speaker, you can do that from your seat. If you wish to speak when I call your name, please come on down, okay? You have choices. Okay. Please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Peter Virgil, and I live at 10213 Dressage Drive in the Canter Creek neighborhood. I am not here to oppose the development of the new homes, but I'm here to speak on behalf of a park that is being built with...
On behalf of the park?
No.
Okay.
There's a park that's also being built with these homes, and we just want to speak on behalf of some of our neighbors.
Okay, so let me... Okay, you speak briefly, but I don't think the park is what's before us today.
It's part of... I believe it's going to be part of the development as well.
Yes, that was already approved, right? Let me turn... Okay, well, let me turn to our council. Can you give us an overview of the park, or the issue of the park? Or Mr. Ship, if you want... You want to do that? Okay, so let's do that first, because I just want to make sure. Let me... Mr. Virgil, we have to consider what's before us today, and that's where I'm trying to keep... I have to stay within our legal parameters. So I just... Mr. Ship, if you could raise the microphone.
And I believe Mr. Virgil might be one of the residents of the newer section.
Okay.
As part of the first phase, we were required to dedicate a parcel, put it on grade, dedicate it to the Parks Department, which we have done. The Parks Department is going through a programming exercise to decide what facilities should be there. I believe they held a public forum in the not-too-distant past, and you may have some folks here from Parks that could speak to it. I know there's some concerns. It's not really our fight. It's nobody's fight. It's a process of determining what should be best done on that park. It's really not the developer's issue, but it's a part...
But the park land... The land was dedicated pursuant to... I just want to get on the record.
The first phase of development and the preliminary plan. So when that was platted in the first phase, it's not part of this section...
Right.
...at all. But they're an adjoining resident of this community, and we're sensitive to their concerns.
So this was... So let me just make sure I'm clear. So this was a requirement of the preliminary plan, which was already approved possibly prior to these folks moving in. I'm not sure that they can tell me that.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And it's not what's before us today, and there's no... And we... There are provisions in the law about dedication of parkland, right? So if you can elaborate on that.
No, that's correct. David Warner, Principal Counsel. I agree with what Mr. Ship, how he outlined it. This dedication was part of the preliminary plan you approved prior to this, but it's not part of this particular application.
Well, I guess I was trying to figure out why was it part of the preliminary plan? Because there's a requirement for some... That's... I want some attorney to tell me. You want... Or you can tell me. You're an attorney.
I can tell you too. It was a required dedication associated with the preliminary plan approval.
Okay. So it's... Okay. Okay. So you want to come on down? Okay.
Yes.
Sonia. Listen. Thank you. Okay, are you able to elaborate a little bit?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, member of the board. My name is Sonya Ewing. I am Assistant Chief for the Parks Department, Park Planning and Development Division. Get that correct. As stated, we met earlier in February with residents of the Canter Creek community, Williamsburg Estates Community, and Holloway Estates Community.
Is that February of this year, 2020?
Yes. Yes, a few weeks ago, to discuss a particular proposal for the parkland that's identified, associated with an approved CIP proposal at that location.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so have a seat closer to the front, because we need to call on you again, Ms. Ewing. Thank you.
Lido.
Okay. Mr. Virgil? So my... Our dilemma here is, I know you're here to talk about the park, which is not an application that's in front of us right now. So...
I know the park's going to be built. We're not opposing the park. We just want it to be a community park instead of being a public park. We just want to make that statement known to the board members and the representatives from the national...
And I can't promise that that would happen, okay? Because I'm sure pursuant to our mandatory dedication, I think it would have to be open to the public.
Okay. And just one final thing I do want to say is, we are open to discussing this more with the members if there has to be a subsequent meeting, so we can get the voice of the community, Canter Creek neighborhood community.
Okay. So with the Parks and Recreation Department?
Correct.
That's fine. Okay.
And make sure she has your information, or all the citizens' information, so...
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Chantel Virgil? And we have to remember, okay, so what's before us are the homes, so talk of... Please address the issue of the 165 homes. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Chantel Virgil. I also live at 10213.
Then that's surprising.
And so I want to thank you guys for allowing us to speak. However, it's a little disheartening, because we were told to be here to specifically talk about the park. We were told from our parking planning meeting that took place on February, as well as our HOA meeting that happened prior to that, maybe a week or two prior to that, to come here today to speak with you guys. So it just contributes to kind of the runaround that we've been given, and I understand that you guys can't make any decisions today, and we respect the position that you guys have been put into, because we're now in an awkward position as well.
When... How long have you lived there?
I've lived it... Well, me and my husband, we lived there since April 1st of last year.
And when was the preliminary plan approved?
It was approved way before any of the homes were even built there. And so I want to kind of get you to understand that this is not a park separate from Canter Creek. This is a park that is going to be built as if it was one of those, like, clubhouse that most developments have, that's private just to that development, but it's been trying to... Kind of tricked into being a public park in a private area. And so there's parking issues that they refuse, parking planning refused to address, and this has been discussed in our meetings.
And how do you know that they refuse? They haven't made a decision on what's going to be there yet, so how do you...
Well, this is based off of what they are saying to us in our meetings.
Okay, so, Ms. Ewing, I just... I want to make sure you're hearing. Okay, I'm not asking you to speak yet, but I want to make sure you're hearing, okay?
Right. And I've spoken directly to her, and so they've said that there's going to be 20 to 50 parking spaces, and we were asking, well, there's 20 to 50 parking spaces in the park around the corner, and there's usually people parked on the grass, they're double parked, it's a mess. So what are they prepared to do about it when this happens, not separate from Canter Creek, but in this kind of cone of what Canter Creek looks like now?
Okay.
And she says that's not their problem. It's going to be...
Well, I hope she didn't say that that's not my problem.
No, she said that we would not call parking planning. We'll call Department of Transportation, and we'll put up a sign, and we'll do all these different things. We'll do all these different things that does not concern them after the park is built.
Okay.
And so that's one of our main concerns, amongst others.
Okay, let me do this. Let me say this, because I'm going to give Ms. Ewing the opportunity to respond, but I have to tell you, okay, so obviously the preliminary plan was approved way before... You couldn't live there before the preliminary plan, and the final plat. So I... Well, all right. Anyway, so the preliminary plan was approved, excuse me, for that, a while ago, and this park is a prerequisite pursuant to the subdivision regulations, and what... The park is there, because that's a requirement of the mandatory dedication. So what's... What it's going to look like, there's some flexibility there, and so that's when you can still continue to work with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Ms. Ewing, do you want to comment?
Again, Sonya Ewing. The preliminary plan from my review here, it looks like it was approved in 2009.
Okay.
This case has been one, and the development has been one that's been happening for years. And one of the things we're trying to balance at the Parks Department was during the approval of the earlier plans, residents from the surrounding communities had specific requests of the developer as this development was coming in, and one of them was that a park was dedicated for shared public use. And so this will... This is a community park, not a neighborhood park. So community parks are, I believe, over 20 acres is our minimum for a community-sized park, and it's supposed to have elements and amenities that support not only...
The development.
...the direct neighbors, but a larger community. When we do a neighborhood park, a lot of times it has no parking, because the thought is that it's more walkable...
Right.
...and it's more like tot lots, smaller, right around the corner from you. So this is a larger park, larger development, that was designed to support the community as a whole, and the dedication was subject to the ordinance, instead of doing, you know, private rec, I'm putting my air quotes up, or the onsite dedication where it would be run and managed by their HOA. And I think that's a piece of maybe some misunderstanding between the developer and the people as they purchased their homes. They knew that it was a community park, but the definition to them about what a community park would be, and who... What a community park means, who it's run by, and who it's for, seemed to be at the core of a lot of the lack, you know, misunderstanding.
Okay, so let me stop you for a second. You can continue. I just want to make sure. So the park was requested by the neighbors at the time, prior to the approval of the preliminary plan of subdivision in 2009. Okay. It is larger than a strictly neighborhood park. It is a community park, which is not just for the particular subdivision, but beyond the subdivision. For some, it will be walkable and bikeable to have access. For others, you would have to drive. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I didn't want to interrupt you, but David Warner, Principal Counsel. Just before the conversation gets too far astray into the discussion of the park, the matter that is agendized before you is the specific design plan for Phases Three and Four.
Right.
It absolutely has nothing to do at all with this park.
Right.
So the discussion really is outside of the boundaries, kind of, of what you agendize for this particular meeting.
It is. That's what I said earlier.
Yeah.
But we have citizens who are here who are saying that they have been requested to be here, and so I don't...
And what was requested at that meeting was that the residents sign up as of...
Parties of record.
Parties of record, to be aware of items that come up with our board that are in front of them, that are happening in their neighborhood, because there was also... There was also just some kind of... There were lots of discussions about process, who has say, when they have say.
And who has... And they have a registered homeowners' association?
The homeowners' association is still under the approval of the developer.
Under the...
Got it. And so not this specific meeting, but registering to record to be aware of meetings were... Was advised to the residents in attendance.
Okay, so I'm trying... Let me finish what I was trying to say before, okay? So I was trying to go down this path about why the park was approved, when it was approved, and the park is a requirement now, so we can't undo that. What it looks like remains to be seen. My... Lost my train of thought. Okay, so what it looks like remains to be seen, but sometimes... There are two things that I would advise you as a cautionary measure now. One, as Ms. Ewing indicated, always sign up for a party as a party of record, because you'll know what's going on in your community. When the homeowners' association is turned over to you, make sure it's registered with us, because then the homeowners' association will get notices about other things that are in the community. Thirdly, it appears as though I saw you nodding your head or shaking your head, and so you may not have known that a park was in the works. Did you, or did you not?
We did not know. We were told that it was going to be private. The residents that were buying their homes was told by the developer that it would be private.
Was it the developer or the...
Salesperson.
Or salesperson? I don't know who... Was it the developer that told you that?
Well, it was the sales rep.
Okay. See, and some... We've had issues before, that sometimes people don't know that, but I would... The final thing, I would caution everyone, wherever they live in the county. If you're looking to purchase something, we have an information desk that's right located in this building, and you can look and say, "I'm considering buying a home in this area," and they will tell you what the zoning is, what the developments are all around that particular... Your particular property or that you're interested in. You can get copies of the plans, and you can see in advance, okay, what's on schedule to be developed, what kind of parks, what kind of trees are going to come down, what's... You know, that kind of stuff. And you can see that in advance, and that helps you make an informed decision. Unfortunately, not everybody knows that until after the fact. So I just say that so that you... Just to caution people from here on in, you can't undo what's already happened, but from here on in, you know, avail yourself of our information counter, which is on the lower level in this building, so that you can get that kind of information. So...
There you have it.
Yeah, it didn't happen. And we're sorry about that. Our counsel is right that this hearing is on the homes, the 165 homes, but I understand you needed a venue to air your concerns about the park.
Well, we were told that this was the venue to do that, and so we understand the position, like I said, the position that you guys are in, and I'm glad that, for the record, that we're letting you all know that there is...
Thirdly, um, it appears as though, I, I saw your, you nodding your head or shaking your head. And so you may not have known that a park was in the works, did you or did you not?
We did not know, we were told that it was going to be private. The, the residents that were buying their homes was told by the developer that it would be private.
Was it the developer or the, um, or, or salesperson? I don't know who, was it the developer that told you that?
Well, it was the, the sales rep.
Okay, see, and some, we've had issues before, that sometimes people don't know that. But I would, the final thing, I would caution everyone, wherever they live in the county. If you're looking to purchase something, we have an information desk that's right located in this building. And you can look and say, I'm considering buying a home in this area. And they will tell you what the zoning is, what the developments are all around that particular, your particular property or that you're interested in. Um, you can get copies of the plans and you can see in advance, okay, what's, what's um on schedule to be developed, what kind of parks, what kind of trees are going to come down, what's, you know, that kind of stuff. And you can see that in advance, and that helps you make an informed decision. Unfortunately, not everybody knows that until after the fact. So I just say that so that you, just to caution people from here on in, you can't undo what's already happened, but from here on in, you know, avail yourself of our information counter, which is on the lower level in this building, um, so that you can get that kind of information, so um.
There you have it.
Yeah, it didn't happen. And, and, and we're sorry about that, our counsel is right that this hearing is on the homes, the hundred sixty-five homes, but I understand you needed a venue to air your concerns about the park.
Well, we, we were told that this was the venue to do that. And, and, and so we, we understand the position, like I said, the position that you guys are in. And I'm glad that, for the record, that um we're letting you all know that there is still um some sort of under-representation of the people that are directly impacted by this park. And that parking planning has not, um, uh, they have, they have not addressed those issues other than telling us to talk to someone else. And, and so if they're representing the community, we are directly the community. And, and they still have not solved any of the issues that will come about.
And let me just say this, because some of this is, is an offline, out of, uh, conversation to take place separate and apart from this hearing. But you should still have um communications, I'm instructing you to, Ms. Ewing, and I know the department will. But some of those things don't fall within the purview of Parks, Park and Planning and Parks and Recreation. So with, when you talk about parking and if people are parked illegally, then the, the County Department of, um, I guess it's Enforcement, Per- permitting inspections and enforcement would be the one called to, to um cite people, because we can't do that, we don't have any authority to do that. You know, maybe you can arrange a meeting where they are invited as well to come, so that, so that they can talk, they can give suggestions about what to do in the event that there's a problem in the future.
Okay, so.
Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, just real quick, I just wanted to remind everyone that the park situation would have to be discussed at a mandatory referral
Right.
later on in the process, so, you know, we can get you more information about that as it comes.
I understand. Lastly, I'll just say, we will, uh, once this park is built and we have the issues that we've brought up to them numerous times, the eighty-eight or hundred-plus residents will then be calling the park police. And we will be calling Park Transportation, I guess this will just be our problem.
Okay, well, that's, that's an opinion that you clearly feel you need to share. But, um, and if there is a, if, if an occurrence takes place there, um, um, yes, that would be fine with Park Police. If there's something else that takes, if there's an enforcement issue, we may have to call someone else. But, but you will be invited, you have signed up as a party of record, you will get notice. I would encourage you to keep talking offline prior to the mandatory referral. So that when you come here at the, um, for the mandatory referral, that you have things a little bit, worked out a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Catherine Farley?
Hi, I'm Catherine Farley with Marymount Equestrian Center. And I'm just here to make sure that the trails are staying protected, as he just spoke about. And um also that the easement is put in for the horses and the land that we use around the Equestrian Center. And, as he spoke, it's all still good, that's why I'm here.
Okay, are there questions to Ms. Farley? Thank you. Um, that concludes my sign-up list, was there anyone who wished to speak whose name I did not call? Mr. Ship?
Nothing further, Madam Chair, we will meet with Ms. Farley and, and coordinate with the Equestrian Center as we move forward.
Okay, but everyone needs we've, we've talked about the, the park in depth now, but I'm just saying, everyone needs to be involved with coming to some semblance of agreement. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions of anyone? Mr. Burke, anything else to add?
Nothing more to add, Madam Chair.
Is there, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDP dash one-two-zero-two-dash-zero-seven and TCP two-dash-zero-four-three-dash-two-zero-one-nine, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further revised by applicant exhibit number one.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just brief discussion, um, since the applicant is here, make sure your salespeople are communicating correctly um for the new homes that you're going to be building, because we don't want to have more citizens coming in here with misunderstandings.
Okay, um, is there any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're going to take a minute and then we set up, uh, Mr. Berger for item five, thank you. Okay, um, the Prince George County Planning Board is back in session, and now we're going to hear item five, the twenty-twenty Historic Property Grant Program designations or recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair, this is Daniel Tanna, staff for the record from the Historic Preservation Section. And I am presenting the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendations for awards for the two thousand twenty Historic Property Grant Program. These are the applications that we received this year. We started accepting applications in August of two thousand nineteen. We held four workshops throughout the county, one in August, uh, three in September. Various parts of, of the day and in various locations. Uh, we also offered an online grant workshop this year, that, that folks that couldn't make it to the workshops could watch that online. And these are the applications that we ended up with after that. We received fourteen in total, thirteen were completed and passed forward to the Grant Subcommittee for consideration. These are the criteria which the Planning Board, uh, Planning Board approved a number of years ago, that are used to score each of the applications out of one hundred potential points. Uh, this is the geographic distribution of this year's applications. As you can see, we have applications from almost every council-matic district within the county. And then these are the Historic Preservation Commission's uh total scores for each of the applicants and uh funding recommendations for each of the applicants. So out of the um applicants, there are a number that were not recommended for funding. Uh, any, any application that scored lower than seventy out of a hundred points was not recommended for funding. And those that scored above were recommended for a portion of the funding that they requested, though many of them were reduced in order to spread the funds out to more potential applicants. So very quickly, uh, with, with your permission, I can go through uh the applications briefly, one by one, so you can see who these folks are. And this is, this is how the, uh, the grant award recommendations were reduced from what they requested, based on their scores using a numeric formula. So very quickly, this is Saint Joseph's Chapel in Beltsville requesting fifty thousand dollars for in-kind replacement of their roof and flashing. Uh, they requested fifty thousand dollars and are recommended for forty-one thousand nine hundred and four. This is the Gallant House, uh, recommend, uh, requested forty-nine thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and recommended for no funding, uh, to do uh some foundation repair, fence replacement, security boulders along the fence line. This is the Berwin Heights School, uh, requested eleven thousand two hundred and forty-five and recommended for that same amount for exterior repainting and minor wood repairs. Uh, this applicant has applied two years in a row and, and um their application was found to be acceptable this year and, and fundable. So persistence is, is great for applicants for the program. This is the John J. Moller House in Hyattsville, requested fifty thousand dollars to do basically a full exterior rehabilitation, uh, which included a number of work items, uh, and they were recommended for forty-one thousand nine hundred and four dollars. This is forty-two thirty Ogletherp Street in Hyattsville, requested fifty thousand dollars for uh exterior rehabilitation, including porch and window work, uh, and recommended for thirty-five thousand dollars of funding. This is the Bel Air Mansion and Cemetery, recommended for thirty-eight thousand out of a requested.
What are they doing, uh, uh, the Bel Air Mansion, I know, is anyone here from, no one's here from there, huh? I know there, okay. I know that there was an issue, so this is right there in Bowie, right? So I know, can you come forward for a second? Bel Air Mansion, and I know, um, there was an issue, because normally, sometimes you have, um, events there, the city has holiday events there sometimes, or tree lighting, and it's not, it's not accessible, correct?
Yes, correct, and actually, that's one of our, our projects that we're going to be looking at, trying to fund for the next year, is to make those kinds of events and functions accessible, we realize the importance of that.
Yes, it is.
And it is a priority for the, for the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
So, so they, for this, for.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you come back for the record? I forgot to ask you to identify yourself, I was so interested in the accessibility.
Sure, my name is Susan Proctor, and I'm the Historic Properties Manager for the City of Bowie Museums.
Thank you so much, good to see you again.
You too.
Uh, the, the next project is the Frederick and Francis Watkins House, uh, requested fifty thousand dollars to do rebuilding of a, of a chimney, repairing of a slate roof, uh, painting, exterior wood trim, and restoration of this picture window here, and they've been recommended for forty-one thousand four hundred and two dollars. This is the Samuel Hargrove House in Fairmont Heights, requested fifty thousand dollars for carpentry repairs, wiring, plumbing, ductwork. It's just a whole big rehabilitation project and recommended for thirty-five thousand dollars in funding. Uh, this is the Louis Brown House, recommended for zero funding out of a requested fifty thousand dollars for roof siding restoration, replacement of flooring, refinishing, interior plaster, et cetera. This is the Duval Hopkins Store at Hall Road, requested five thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars to run an electrical supply to the building, uh, and recommended for no funding. This is the Cheltenham Methodist Church and Cemetery, requested twenty-five thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and recommended for that same amount for repair of exterior windows.
Can you go back to the other one? The Frederick and Francis Watkins House, where is that?
Uh, Bowie, or, yeah, Bowie, yeah. Just outside of the main part, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And the Louis Brown House, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Uh, so Louis Brown House and Samuel Hargrove House are both in Fairmont Heights. And they're very close by each other, the dot kind of barely moves there, uh, and then the next one.
So let me stop with the Duval Hopkins Store.
Sure.
So, tell me why they fell short, I, the Louis Brown House is asking for fifty thousand dollars. And, and what happened, their application doesn't measure up in terms of the points. But the Duval Hopkins Store is not asking for that much.
Correct.
So I need to go back and look at where they fell short.
Sure, I can bring that back up really quickly here. So they are right here, they scored fifty-four out of a hundred points. And I can, I can get that information, I think you, in the, in the attachments for this agenda item, there is a full breakout of the score of, you know, each category, what they got, but I, I didn't include that in the presentation.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay.
But yeah, ultimately, even though they weren't requesting a huge amount of money, I guess the, the Grant Committee decided that the application was not, uh, in, in total worthy of funding this year compared to the other applications that were received. Which is, of course, one of the constraints that the program has, is that an application that may not score strongly one year can score differently in a different given year because of the application pool that they're competing against.
Okay.
So that, that's probably has more to do, you know.
Thank you.
And, and certainly, you know, we encourage applicants who aren't successful to come back. Uh, as I pointed out, the Berwin Heights School was an unsuccessful applicant last year. But in this year's pool of applications, they, they sort of found themselves rising a little bit higher up in the, in the total score, and were successful, so there's always that as well.
On the Samuel, on the Samuel Hargrove, if you don't mind going back, so the, it's for fifty thousand, right?
Yes, their request, requested was fifty, and then the recommended is thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's owned by, what is it currently used for?
It's not used for anything, the, the property owner, uh.
Lives in Washington, right?
He, he lives internationally, I think, at this point. Um, but we've spoken with him at great length, and he intends to one day relocate to the United States and, and live in the home. Uh, that, that's been his expressed desire. And so the, the main goal is to kind of get it to a condition where it is livable, because right now it, it's not, uh, I don't think it would be habitable. So that's the main goal of that project, which I can jump back to.
And then I'd like us to go back to Duval Hopkins, because I had a question about that.
So, so this is the Samuel Hargrove House, and as you can see, the interior of it is in pretty poor condition too. So we're, um, it's a great historic resource in Fairmont Heights, it just needs some assistance to get to a point where someone can use it for a residence or for any other use, for that matter. And then this is the Duval Hopkins Store.
Yeah, so your presentation indicates that they requested five thousand two hundred and seventy-three, but the binder indicates that the amount of their request is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two.
Their request changed, uh, they had originally submitted one vendor to, to be the person to do the work, and then the vendor changed after the binder was made, so it was updated to this lower amount. And this was the amount that was considered by the Grant Committee.
And they're wanting to run electricity to the store, uh, I mean, for obvious reasons. I, I can imagine if there's no electricity, the elements will.
Yeah, I think.
In other words, the property will probably become worse and worse condition with no electricity to, right?
Uh, yes, I think their main concern was to add, um, you know, be able to add security features, uh, cameras, things like that. But yes, certainly, uh, once the building is enclosed, it, it currently is sort of open, so air can circulate freely. Once it's enclosed, having electricity to run dehumidifiers and climate control could be useful. But I think they saw it as the first small step in a, in a sort of necessary process of getting, because again, this, this property is also currently vacant, uh, not really usable. And, you know, having electric, or electricity run to it could make it potentially more usable in the future, although they don't have any concrete plans as of yet. And there, there are a couple more I can, I can go to, or if you, if you all want to take some time to look through and ask questions about specific ones, that's okay too, whatever you guys would like to do.
I think, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, uh, so the next one, sort of in my list that we hadn't discussed yet was Nottingham Myers Church and Cemetery. They were requesting six thousand, sixteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars to replace the HVAC system in, there's two, two buildings on the property, and the, the one that we're most concerned with is the historic church building that does not have a fully functional HVAC system at this time. And so that one was recommended for no funding as well. And we did, they did come out to the HPC, and they had a, a large contingent of people to come out in support of the project. And, um, I believe that they are seeking alternative funding for, for this project at this time. This is Black Swamp School in, uh, I'm totally blanking on what this community is called. You can, yes, it's in District Nine, it's, as you can see on the map. And they requested thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and are receiving, or recommended to receive twenty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars to do a rear porch that incorporates a accessible entrance to the property, which it currently doesn't have. And then to add storm windows and storm doors and shutters onto the, to the structure. And that, that is the last of the applicants, so I'm happy to take any other questions you have or whatever, whatever else you would like to ask about the program at this time.
Okay, let's, uh, let's see if there are any other questions at this juncture.
And I should point out quickly that, you know, the total requested amount this year was almost five hundred thousand dollars, which has been pretty consistent over the last three years that I've been with the program. And, you know, the, the amount that we had to give was three hundred thousand, which is why, you know, most folks don't get the full amount that they request, and, and so, so on and so forth, just so that.
So, and I know you've discussed this before, um, so the three hundred thousand is the total that we have to give, which is, as you said, why we can't give the full amount sometimes.
Right.
But we wouldn't be giving anything if it appeared that they didn't have the wherewithal to complete.
Yes, that, that is one of the scoring categories we have, um, you know, the applicant's readiness to complete the project, which is gauged on, you know, the things that they've submitted. We also have administrative capability is, is a scored thing, and that, that kind of boils down to, I think, as, not as a person who actually scores the applications, but as the staff that's there when it's happening. You know, I think they look at how complete the applications are, if they're clearly put together and, and backed up by good, you know, application materials. So that, that is part of the overall scoring process, at, you know, out of that hundred points, there's a, there's a portion of it that certainly looks at whether or not, uh, the Grant Subcommittee and then the HPC believes that the work can actually be completed as, as applied for. And that, that also speaks to whether or not the work is approvable. Sometimes folks might apply for work that the HPC could not approve. I don't think that's the case with any of the applications this year, but that's considered as well.
All of these receiving funding for the first time, because some of them. because some of them seem very familiar.
No, no, that's a great question. So John J. Muller House would be a first-time recipient, as would the Frederick and Francis Watkins House. To clarify, they actually were selected for an award in the past. I can't remember what year. It was a different property owner then, and that property owner was not able to get a clear title to have the easement applied, which is required for receiving grant funds. Now the property has moved on to new owners who are interested in doing a lot of the same work that needed to be done a number of years ago. And of course, the conditions have worsened. So it's the same property receiving an award, but this would be the first time they've actually been able to go through or we hope will be able to go through the process and actually receive the funds. Bel Air Mansion would be a first-time recipient. And then the... Yeah, the last three would be first-time recipients. So of the total, I guess it would have been easier to point out that Cheltenham Methodist Church and St. Joseph's Chapel and Black Swamp School are all repeat grantees.
I thought so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Of the ones that didn't get any... That did not get any funding, the four at the bottom of the list, have any of those applied in prior years and been denied as well or gotten funding?
Nottingham Myers has actually received funding in the past. And then the other three, I don't believe so. Or no, I'm sorry. Duval Hopkins Store also has received money in the past. We... I think the roof that's on there was funded a number of years ago. So two of the four have applied before and have been successful, and two of the four have not applied in the past, as far as I know.
And are you going to go back to them afterwards and sort of provide the recommendation or why they got denied?
We usually do based on their score. We will kind of give them a summary, which I believe is also included in the attachments there that sort of just gives... Points out the areas that their application scored the lowest in so you can sort of look at, you know, your scoring breakdown and see where your application was considered weakest by those who were doing the scoring. And then, you know, we can work with them to improve their applications, which staff does that already. But, you know, we can certainly, if they choose to come back and reapply next year, work on them to...
I want to follow up on that because I don't think Commissioner Dorner was on the board at this time, but this came up before. And where... Because some municipalities have the wherewithal and some people have the wherewithal to ensure that their application is complete and addresses all the criteria, and some don't. And so we started doing some sort of briefings ahead of times. And so that was what we do beforehand. But similarly, afterwards, to follow up on Commissioner Dorner's question, which was a good question, just to make sure that they know after the fact.
What happened.
What happened and how their application can be improved next time.
Yes, in the form letters that we send out either congratulating or offering regrets to the applicants based on whether or not they receive funding, for those that don't receive funding, we do include a sentence or two sort of breaking down the low... Where their scores were the lowest so that they can focus on those in the future. And then also, as staff, I'm aware of that for next year because, as I said, we do work with them. We have an early deadline where folks submit a kind of preliminary application. And we've, in the past few years, have sort of changed the application process to require that we get an early application to ensure that we have at least about a month of time to sit down, read through their initial application with a fine-tooth comb, and then offer them detailed support and recommendations on how to improve their application before the final deadline comes. So that's something we've done for the last two years just to really try to make sure that, as you said, folks that don't have the same maybe level of administrative support as a municipality might have, you know, can also get some level of support from commission staff. Yeah.
Another question unrelated to these particular applications. But on our website, do we have a webpage that goes through all of the properties each year that have gotten funding and kind of before-and-after looks?
We do keep a running list. I think every year we put up a list of who has received awards, and then we also keep a running list of our easement properties. I don't know that we have a comprehensive list of sort of before-and-after photos, but that is something that we, when we do the grant workshops in the fall and late summer when we're accepting applications, we usually highlight a number of properties sort of before and after to show what the impacts of the program can be. And I think those are online, but it isn't for every single property that's ever received funding. It's mostly kind of a highlight reel.
Yeah, as long as there's something that highlights online, like what we do and like here's what it was before, here's how they improved it afterwards and some sort of success stories. I think that'd be good.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. We do have that, and we try to update it pretty frequently when we put up... Because every year after the planning board makes their decisions, we update our webpage with a running list of who's received fundings. And that usually includes a page of photos and, you know, the property name and the historic site identification number and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
So move.
Second.
And so we're moving the recommendation. We have a motion in a second. Has someone wished to speak?
Oh.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll withdraw the motion, okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gillian Seagraves. Gillian Seagraves. I am here just to speak a little bit on the Duval Hopkins Store application. I guess number one, the first thing I want to do is thank you for working with us. They have given us... We have been approved before, just not this year. But basically, I just wanted to speak on some of the recommendations that were made or the explanation of scores that were made for the properties. The number one reason why we applied was so that we could secure the site, the building and the area. Also, not only for the building, but for the neighbors in the area. There's a housing development right behind, and there is a veterans office right across the street. Our idea was to install motion lights, possibly some cameras, to deter vandalism and any break-ins that could happen just for the property. It's kind of in a, I wouldn't say a secluded location, but it's in a road that's off of 214. So you wouldn't visibly be able to see it from a road that's traveled. And basically, the one comment I wanted to make was where it says that there was... It's unlikely to stimulate preservation activities. I don't believe that to be true because I... We can't do future preservation activities unless we have electricity. Or we could, but we would need generators and other things to actually get the contractors to come to the site and to do work from therefore. And I kind of just wanted to say that whether there's like a pretty before-and-after picture or not, some of the preservation things... Items that are needed to be done for some of the properties, including mine, are very important. Just because you can't really see a picture of electricity coming to a building doesn't mean that it's not an important item. And that's all.
Well, quick question, just so I'm clear. Because you mentioned and also staff mentioned that, you know, the security cameras. So is this to get just basic electricity? Does the building have any electricity at all?
No electricity right now.
So it's access to electricity in addition to the security measures?
Right, that was all in the application.
Okay, okay.
And this is one that got a grant before, right?
Yes.
Okay, and what was your grant before, for the first time?
I believe it was for the roof.
Okay, okay. Okay. Madam Vice Chair?
What is your relationship to the Duval Hopkins?
To the homeowner? I'm basically her assistant.
Okay. Thank you.
And what do you plan to do if you get the electricity besides the security cameras? You said it would help spur potentially preservation of the structure. What would you intend on doing afterwards that you wouldn't be able to do without the electricity?
You can't really see from this picture, but there is a hole, for lack of a better word, in the back of the building that if we want to have a carpenter come in and repair that area, it would be a lot easier to do with electricity on-site.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, so the motion before was withdrawn. And the second... So is there a new motion?
Yeah, I still move approval, Madam Chair, staff's recommendation. But I would strongly encourage staff to take a... And this, of course, is if Duval Hopkins applies again next year, a stronger look at that because I'm really sensitive to the fact that they don't have electricity. And if this is a... If this is a historic property, you know, 12 months can make a huge difference in terms of... You know, it may only take $6,000 now. Next year, it may be $60,000 as a result of not being able to, you know, appropriately address the climate change.
Can I just ask the motion maker? Do we want to redistribute funds from one of the projects to this one if we're capped out already, just to give the 5,000, like 5,000 to this one?
I would be open to that.
So I would suggest taking 5,000 from the Samuel Hargrove House and reallocating it to this one.
I would be very open to that.
Okay. Well, wait a minute. Let me see. Let me... So...
Is that to Switzerland?
Yes.
Is that to Switzerland? Yeah, I'd go with that.
Yeah, the international owner.
So that person would get 30,000?
Yes, he still gets a fair amount of money.
Yeah. Okay. I would also ask... What did you tell me? Okay, so that's the motion maker. That's an amendment to the motion. A substitute motion? Okay. What about... A friendly amendment, rather. So what about the Nottingham Myers Church and Cemetery? Can we... I'm not asking us to do anything this year, but can we look closely at that next year should they apply?
Absolutely.
Okay. All in favor of the new amended motion indicate... Was there any other discussion? All in favor of the new amended motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
So pursuant to Section 3-305 B7 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, we need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of consultation with counsel over contractual provisions.
So move.
Thank you.
Oh, well.
And related to real estate transactions. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Proctor, good luck with that project. Good luck with that other project, too. Okay, thank you. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any additional business to come before planning board today?
No.
Seeing none, planning board is adjourned.